And call our city council on this the 8th of August 2017 to order. We welcome those that are in attendance this evening. We would like to have the Pledge of Allegiance and we've asked Alan Rudin to lead us in that. Alan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was a group effort, thank you. This evening, we have a presentation and I will probably slaughter the official name but the Willamette Valley and is it Pilenson? Pilancy? Project and they're going to present a task representation or a replica to the city of McMinnville and the McMinnville Police Department. And I think Mike is here to make that presentation. So Mike, if you'd come up.
This is actually something that's been in the works for quite some time. I found my first fossil down on the river when I was 12 years old. And when I was a police officer here in McMinnville, I continued this and started incorporating a lot of student education in with it. After I retired, the city of McMinnville, the McMinnville Police Department has been absolutely wonderful to me granting my group of volunteers and students from all over the Willamette Valley access to McMinnville City property to access the river to carry on our research down there. To date, we've had Oregon State University down there, University of Oregon, Lynnfield College, McMinnville High School, three different high schools from up and down the valley and a number of other research groups. OMSI, the Marine Hatfield Science Center has participated, the National Aeronautic and Oceanic Administration has had scientists down at our site. It's kind of a cool thing for a town as small as McMinnville to be able to make this kind of a contribution. And this summer, we've made nine floats so far, most of them incorporating students from around the area. We've become very student oriented. And a long time ago, I thought the city of McMinnville, particularly the police department, has given us absolutely invaluable aid in getting to and from the site, loaning us equipment. Their members volunteer for us. I wanted to do something for the city to say, gee, I really appreciate this, thank you very much. So I've got a couple of the professors from Lynnfield College here. Lynnfield has been working with us for quite some time. This is a exact replica of McMinnville Mammoth Tusk. We have the best studied and excavated mammoth skeleton in Oregon, right here in the city limits of McMinnville. Actually, access it through city property to get to it. And we've produced a replica for the city and a plaque to go along with it. So Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, who would you like to accept it? And Chief Scales?
It's heavy, you might need three or four people.
Good to see you, sir. He's been in the paper a number of times with articles and I've been following with interest and...
It's kind of serendipitous that we finished this tusk and got the award ready to give to the city of McMinnville or the presentation of the city of McMinnville about three weeks after. I've been working on this thing in my off time for about five months. But about three weeks after, we discovered Castoroides here in McMinnville. McMinnville now has bragging rights to the Giant Forest Beaver, the Lake Pleistocene. So Beaver State has the first verified fossil from the Giant Forest Beaver west of the Continental Divide. I mean, this isn't just a local thing, this is west of the Continental Divide. So we've got three or four professors and hopefully I'm going to bring Lynnfield on this to want to publish on. So we're famous.
We love it. We love it, you guys.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
And again, that was amazing. Up close, it looks so authentic. It's great. This takes us to the invitation for citizen, for public comment. Anyone that would like, in the audience that would like to provide public comment to the council is free to come up and speak on any topic other than a topic that's already on the agenda, a matter that's in litigation, a quasi judicial land matter, or matters that's scheduled for a public carrying at some future date. And so would there be anyone in the audience that would like to come and speak before the council tonight? Jeb? Rebecca?
Sign in. Okay. Okay, so my name is Rebecca Quant and I live at 612 Northwest 13th Street. I'll keep this very brief. I just want to say thank you for listening to our comments two weeks ago. I've gotten a lot of response from some merchants and community members and they greatly appreciate seeing Officer Height downtown. They're optimistic, they have a good feeling about everything going on. We're excited at the MDA of this next steps and I just wanted to just reiterate that. I know the two and a half hours of conversation can really wear on you. We appreciate what you're doing. So that's all.
So any comments? Rebecca, let me just share with you tonight in our dinner meeting, that's why we were a bit late tonight. We're going to come up with a task force on safety and behavior. And so we were instructing staff to put that together. And then another tier of that is going to be using that executive group that are meeting to be a part of that too. So we've gotten, go ahead from council and I'm out of town the rest of this week, but next week, we can get together and then I'll bring that all together so you can take back to your board.
That's great.
But we likewise appreciated the thoughtful approach. We took many notes and we met directly right after that next Monday to bring our notes together that's led us to the discussion that we had tonight. It's very hard at a council that we can't bring us all together unless it's a scheduled meeting like we had tonight. And so that's why it takes a little time. It takes us two weeks to get one meeting down, but that's kind of where we're at. So thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any others? Jeb?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jeb Ladeen. I work at 611 Northeast 3rd Street in McMinnville. And I wanted to come tonight to just tell you a little bit about something I learned in the last year and a half or so. And I will try not to take too much of your time, but this is a short discussion we had at the Water and Light Commission earlier and they suggested that we bring this very short dog and pony show to the city council to tell you a little bit about what we learned in working on the Atticus Hotel project. I was involved with that and am involved with that with some other people. Related to all of the private utilities in McMinnville and the process and the issues that can face not just developers but the downtown and the city as a whole. When we brought up, just a quick show and tell, when we looked at the site, we first looked at it and just looked at it from 4th Street and we said, oh gosh, you know, that could be a problem as we look at this project of what's going to go on with this really heavy wiring. And it turns out, at the end of the whole thing, a year and a half later, that we were correct. And this will be the view of the second floor balcony suite of that. And it's kind of a long involved story and I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but it has been an education. What we found over the course of that year is that, you know, first of all, we were kind of encouraged, well, there's a water and light fund for undergrounding utilities and that's interesting. And the urban renewal for the city has a goal of undergrounding utilities and that's kind of interesting. And then we started going through the process and what we found is that it's kind of a Wild West out there. And it's a little bit every man for himself in the utility world. There's no, it isn't like walking into the city building department and go, here's planning and here's building permits and here's information here and here's information here and they all work together. And, you know, in the utility world, you go out to Water and Light and get figured out whatever they're going to do. And you go out to Frontier and you go out to Comcast and you go out to any utility and you're kind of at their mercy. And the system doesn't really set up well for them to coordinate together. It might, but they don't. And I'm not here to really complain or point fingers or anything, it just is the way that things are. And as major developments like this one and as other developments happen, I know that we've talked to enough people to know that within Water and Light, within the city, within the other utilities, it's kind of chaos. They understand there's very inefficient a lot of the time because developers or others are dealing with each one individually. And they'll say, well, this would be, we got to estimate $200,000 to $300,000 to underground. And that lasted for a long time. And then it dropped to $100,000, but we really didn't know that that was going to be the case. It's a, well, you pay us the total money upfront, then we'll do that work and if it costs twice that much, then we'll bill you for the rest later. And there's just a lot of factors in here. There's a lot of, well, we found for one thing, we're not sure that Frontier has a phone franchise agreement that's live with the city of McMinnville. It's maybe, but we couldn't quite confirm that. There's franchise agreements, there's agreements with Water and Light, there's pole attachment agreements, there's people that own the poles, there's federal tariff laws, there's just a lot of stuff that is sort of beyond the capability of people that are in our situation to be able to manage. So, you know, that's really, you know, kind of the short story of it all. The message that I had is that in that course of time, we had just a lot of communications with Water and Light. Water and Light kind of said, you know, this is a city public right of way issue, maybe they would be involved. Your staff, you know, Mike and Heather and Jeff and others at the staff know about this situation. It's not something easily solved. It might be worth a look at, you know. Should there be some kind of central, if not regulatory over everybody, at least regulatively coordinating so that the various utilities have to work together? Just for example, when the city, with all kinds of confusion, we thought we might at least put conduit and the Water and Light said, if you want, we'll put conduit because we're going to build a trench to the length of 4th Street, right next to your project. And at the last minute, there was confusion and miscommunication and we didn't get that done. So, I mean, that might have saved $25,000 later in the future because, you know, we're not going to be able to dig that street up again. So all of this might have been resolved had we not had serious financial challenges for this project that ate up money that might have been spent on something like that. But given that urban renewal has a goal of undergrounding, that Water and Light has an appetite for it at times, there's various people that, you know, just like we undergrounded all of the 3rd Street and other utilities to make the downtown a certain atmosphere, we just think it'd be an interesting project for the council to, you know, engage staff and to see if staff over time, years, might find some way to improve that coordinating process. That's it.
Thank you Jeb. And again, thanks for bringing your learnings to the table and we can have a discussion at the council level and see kind of what we might be able to maybe check other communities out and see how they've addressed it. Is it, or if it's, you know, if it's that kind of Wild West approach out there?
Yeah, yeah, I didn't mean that negatively. Everybody has their interests and their situation and their, but it's not an easy fix, I can tell you that.
Well, you know, you talked about urban renewal and how we're trying to, in that district, we're going to put a substantial investment in there over the next 20 years of at least 30 million.
Yeah.
And that's from the urban renewal. And then there's going to be the private that comes in on top of it. And so, again...
Our young partners call that picture I showed you, urban art.
Absolutely.
Putting a good face on it. Thank you.
Thank you Jeb. Anyone else like to come and approach the council? I'll call one more time. Anyone that would like to approach the council this evening? Hearing none, that'll take us to our consent agenda this evening. Our consent agenda considers the minutes of the April 25th, 2017 Dinner and Regular Meeting and the July 19th, 2017 Special Work Session that was strategic planning. And then consider a request for a change in ownership on the OLCC application of the Tequila Grill. Anyone like to take anything off of our consent agenda? Not hearing that, do I have a motion?
It's not moved.
And a second? It's been moved by Council President Menke and seconded by Counselor Garvin. All those in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Let's go to our resolutions tonight. Our first resolution is a Resolution 2017-56, a resolution approving Task Order Number Two, amending the personal service contract to include services during construction of the Northwest Hill Road Transportation Bond Project. And we'll call on Mike to update us on this resolution. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet from Project Manager Larry Sherwood. And note the draft resolution as well as the proposed scope of work for services during construction and prior resolutions that you've adopted setting forth the contract terms with CH2M regarding this project. As you noted, this amends their contract to add services during construction. It amends their contract by $242,523. And this will provide assistance to staff as we move forward with the construction of the project. As I noted at the dinner meeting, we're still working on acquiring the final environmental permitting for the project as well as a couple of outstanding files of property acquisition. We do anticipate that the contractor will be mobilizing and starting construction likely around the 1st of September. So it is a two-season project, so it'll continue into next calendar year. Unless there are any questions, staff would recommend you adopt the resolution as presented.
Any discussion from council pertaining to this resolution or questions for Mike? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2017-56.
It's moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, see if I got this right. Counselor Stassen's moved and it was seconded by Counselor Garvin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. And that resolution passes unanimously. We now move to ordinances this evening. Our first reading with a possible second reading of Ordinance 5033, an ordinance amending ordinance 4904 relating to the solid waste collection franchise. We will now consider the matter of Ordinance 5033. Does any counselor have an ejection to this ordinance being read by title only? Okay. We will ask the city attorney to read the ordinance by title.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5033 and ordinance amending ordinance 4904 relating to the solid waste collection franchise.
With, this is the first reading of ordinance 5033, read by title only. We'll ask the city attorney to present the item for discussion. Or Jeb, do you want to do it?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff has met with representatives of Recology to discuss the possibility of a franchise fee increase from the current 3%. The recommendation before you tonight is to implement an increase to 5% in a two-stage process. One, an increase from 3% to 4% effective October 1st of this year. And second, an increase from 4% to 5% effective July 1, 2018. Recology representatives indicate that they feel like they can accommodate that stage increase within their existing rate structure. We took a look at the most recent League of Oregon Cities survey of waste franchises. About 120 cities in the state of Oregon have franchises for solid waste collection. The average back in 2012 was 5%. The most common individual franchise fee was also 5%. Our recommendation is to adopt the ordinance tonight.
Any discussion among counselors? We can address that to Jeb, but we do have representatives from Recology in the audience if we'd have anything for Fred or anyone from Recology. So I'll just open that up to council if you have any questions or discussion. Go ahead, Adam.
My other question was really Kevin's question, which was how much longer we're in the center of the trash yard.
So, okay. Fred, if you'd come up, we just have a question. Counselor Jeffries, who's been excused this evening, represented the council in testifying before Metro and he had a question and we've talked about it, but he wanted to get it on record of your sense of how much longer Recology would be using Riverbend for the disposal of our waste.
That's not a unilateral decision that Recology would make on its own, so if the city is interested in looking at alternatives, we could start that discussion anytime.
From your perspective, additional cost involved in doing that? If you could give us just a little sense of, as, from your perspective, that would maybe help us kind of know what direction maybe to go as a council?
It would not come at no cost.
Okay.
And it wouldn't double the costs. I know that's a large band to work with, but we have done the modeling before in the past based on data that we got from alternate landfills and it is a spreadsheet that we can update and provide a more accurate estimate. But again, I mean, everybody's perspective is different. A 1% increase can be nominal to one household or individual and it can be more than another can tolerate. So I would rather go back to the spreadsheet and then provide you with the closest estimate that I possibly can than speculate here tonight.
Okay, so where we are sitting right now, we are driving the garbage to Riverbend as the trucks are full, correct?
One truck at a time, yes.
One truck at a time. The transfer station is slated to be completed when?
At the end of August.
End of August, okay.
We did have, there was an interruption. It was a personal matter. Our general contractor had a personal issue and I'll leave that because I don't want to dive into his personal, but it's reasonable absence and I can't imagine that we're more than two weeks behind the original estimated completion date at the end of August at this point.
Okay.
So we are ready to go.
Okay. So again, to council, I would just, any comments to Fred to further understand or discussion? Kelly?
Well, not necessarily to Fred. I guess what I'd like to see is maybe council asks that he provide that information to us in the form of a spreadsheet. So we could kind of look it over and see what we think is reasonable.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to do so.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just thank you for the update and look forward to seeing the spreadsheet and totally understandable why your contractor was gone for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, thanks.
And again, Fred, thank you just for the partnership that we have in the communication with Jeb. And, you know, we really feel like we have good communication and you've been attentive to any of the needs that we've had. And I know the last time you were here, you'd indicated you're growing in the requests for glass containers and yard debris. Where are we, where are we right now, would you guess, in participation of your clients in those two programs that we've recently put on?
So Dave's pro with the numbers here, so he's saying 33% in each of those. What I can tell you is we have steadily grown since the last update. I actually am looking at hiring a second cart delivery individual because we are running out of hours. The carts are going out daily. I mean, it's amazing how much the participation is continuing to move up and up. So I can get, I can run the latest numbers. Dave's pretty great with these here, so...
When you bring, when you provide the information on being the additional cost to not use Riverbend, if you could just update us maybe with a little of that. It's something that we really want to partner with you and know that it comes at a cost to you and to the clients and that's what we want to be focused on.
Absolutely. We will give you a full update on the new program additions and how it's affecting our diversion calculations. So I could tell you, it's, generally speaking, it's been a wonderful addition for the community. We get a lot of positive feedback for it and it's great to see those materials that would otherwise be disposed of now getting a second life, so...
Thank you Fred and Dave. Appreciate it.
What would the timeline be on pulling out of Riverbend? I think kind of following up that, you know, Kevin's can, my understanding of what Kevin's expressed is that as a council, we've kind of made this commitment that the city will ultimately be diverting its waste. And so in order to be, you know, true to that, what kind of timeline would we be looking at once if a rate approval for another facility was approved?
With the transfer station, we'll have access immediately. So there's, there are no obligations. We have no contractual obligations. We let the contract expire when it passed and we have been opening, we've been operating with that facility under no contractual agreement since it expired. So when we are ready with the transfer station and an agreeance as a community, then we will find an alternate destination and take it there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy.
Jeb? So Mayor, members of the council, Counselor Jeffries did raise this question, hope to be part of a conversation. We've been working with Recology to schedule a discussion at the council meeting on the September 26th meeting. So some of these questions will help give Fred and Dave kind of a primer on the kind of issues to bring forward, but we're planning that presentation and discussion for next month.
Great, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that'll be good. That'll be able to bring it all together then. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any further discussion among the council? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5033 to a second reading.
It's moved. Second.
Okay, so Counselor Stassen's and Council President Menke have moved and seconded. All those in favor may signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay? This... This passes unanimously. Ordinance number 5033 passes on its first reading unanimously. We will now ask for the city attorney to ask the... For the ordinance again to be read by title only.
This is the second reading of Ordinance number 5033 and ordinance amending Ordinance 4904 relating to the solid waste collection franchise.
And so I will ask for a motion to adopt Ordinance number 5033.
So moved.
So Counselor Drapkin moved and Council President Menke seconded. Ask the city recorder to pull the council.
Counselor Drapkin?
Aye.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Rudin?
Aye.
Counselor Stassenz?
Aye.
Council President Menke?
Aye.
And this ordinance passes unanimously. Thank you. That will take us to our second ordinance with the first reading with a possible second reading of Ordinance 5034, an ordinance amending the McMinnville zoning ordinance specifics to Chapter 17.6 under definitions, 17.59 Downtown Design Standards and Guidelines, Chapter 17.65 Historic Preservation, and Chapter 17.72 Applications and Review Process for the Preservation of Historic Resources in McMinnville. We will now consider this matter, Ordinance number 5034. Does any counselor object to having this ordinance read by title only? Hearing none, we will have the city attorney please read the ordinance by title only.
This is the first reading of Ordinance number 5034 and ordinance amending McMinnville zoning ordinance specific to Chapter 17.06 Definitions, 17.59 Downtown Design Standards and Guidelines, Chapter 17.65 Historic Preservation, and Chapter 17.72 Applications and Review Process for the Preservation of Historic Resources in McMinnville.
At this time, I will call on Heather. On Heather to... Oh, Chuck's here. Chuck is going to be here to present the ordinance to us with a definition and understanding. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. So this is an ordinance to look at zoning text amendments related to historic preservation in the downtown design standards and guidelines. So just as a little bit of background, because historic preservation items don't often come up to the council level, the current local historic preservation program that the city has is a preservation ordinance, which regulates historic resources in the city. We have a historic resources inventory that was adopted as part of the adoption of the ordinance, and that includes somewhere around 600 properties that are considered historic resources in the city. We have a permit clearance process that we use to review projects against the design standards and the historic preservation ordinance, and we have those guidelines and design standards in the ordinance to follow. Statewide land use planning related to historic preservation. There's the Oregon statewide planning program and goals. Goal five is related to historic areas, and that includes protection of historic resources. There was recently some updates to Oregon administrative rules related to Goal five and the protection of historic resources. The updates were driven by inconsistencies in how local governments administer their historic preservation programs, a desire to better protect national register properties, and to make updates to the owner consent process. So there was a rulemaking advisory committee in 2016. They met over the course of the year. They drafted amendments to the rules, and those were ultimately adopted by the state in January of 2017. So the Historic Landmarks Committee has been reviewing the existing program and looking at the new rules that were adopted. They met over a series of meetings. I think we had it on the agenda six times over the course of the past few months, so they were heavily involved, and they reviewed all of the new rules, looked at how it might impact our local historic preservation program and ordinance, and they worked with staff on drafting amendments to the historic preservation ordinance. They met in June and ultimately recommended to the Planning Commission and the council to approve the amendments that are presented before you today. So the amendments that have been reviewed and recommended for approval by the HLC and the Planning Commission are to the Historic Preservation Chapter, the Downtown Design Standards and Guidelines Chapter, the Applications and Review Process, and also definitions. And I'll run through each of the proposed amendments briefly and welcome any questions afterwards if there's any more detail. So the big change is the creation of the Historic Preservation Chapter. So what we're proposing to do is to repeal the existing Historic Preservation Ordinance and adopt the regulations within the zoning ordinance as a chapter. We think that would be more easier and more consistent for people from the general public in finding the regulations and for staff to administer them. I will point out that much of the existing language from the existing ordinance has stayed the same, and we've been making changes to it, and it's been reformatted to fit into the zoning ordinance, but a lot of the language is the same and it's just been copied over. We included in your packet a copy of the existing ordinance with tracked changes to show what's actually been changed, so you could see that a lot of the language is being honored. So I'll go through some of the changes that are being prompted by the administrative rule updates. The first is review criteria when considering a historic resource designation. There's specific criteria that are used for national register evaluation, and those are what the Oregon administrative rules require to be followed, so we've updated our process to follow those same review criteria. The OARs do allow for local governments to use additional criteria on top of that, and so we're proposing to keep the existing system in place as well and the criteria that we have. The existing resources that are on that inventory were scored originally based on certain characteristics, and so the HLC thought it would be beneficial to still have that there to be able to refer to in the future. Other updates are to the owner consent process, and this comes from a recent Oregon Supreme Court case in Lake Oswego, and the changes basically allow for owners to refuse designation during the designation process if they formally make that request on the public record. They also included a process that owners could follow to request removal if they met certain criteria, and the city would have to automatically grant the removal from the inventory if they met those criteria. And so that... Those two processes have been added to our local code consistent with the OARs. We've also updated the definition of owner to match the OAR language as well. The preservation standards and guidelines. The OARs require that locally protected resources be subject to the Secretary of the Interior Standards and Guidelines for archaeology and historic preservation, so we've included that, those standards in the proposed amendments. I'll point out that we did clarify and only historic landmarks are required to be subject to those standards and guidelines. Our current inventory has four different levels of historic resources in the city: distinctive, significant, contributory, and environmental, and the four categories, and only the top two would be subject to those standards and the review process. That's consistent with our current practice. That's what we do now, and we did clarify with the state that we can continue to do that, so that's what we're proposing to keep as our historic practice. The protection of national registered resources was another focus of the OARs. They require protection, so we've added that. That type of resource is a specific type to be protected and to be subject to our review process and our design standards and guidelines. The OARs do allow for accessory and non-contributing structures to be excluded, and so the HLC and the Planning Commission's recommending to include that exclusion. The idea behind that is that those structures might not be built during any period of significance or might not have any historic characteristics, so it didn't seem right to subject those to the design standards. That would be difficult to follow. There's also a requirement that a public hearing process be held for any national register resource that's requested to be demolished, so we've included that in the process as well, and we've included that to be held by the Historic Landmarks Committee. One other change that we're proposing is kind of outside of the OAR updates, but something that the Historic Landmarks Committee is interested in is the certificate of approval process. So I mentioned that currently we have a building permit clearance process, which is triggered by a request for a building permit or a project that requires a building permit, and a lot of our design standards and a lot of things with historic properties can be changed and altered without a building permit, and I think we've had a lot of those types of situations in the city, and we've had alterations occur that are inconsistent with the downtown... Or with the historic landmarks requirements and standards. So our proposal is a certificate of approval process to replace that, and that would basically require a review of more exterior alterations to historic landmarks. We've updated the definition of an alteration to describe when an alteration requires review, and it would be something that results in a change in design, materials, or appearance. And we've included a language to allow for the planning director to determine whether something meets that definition or not, so whether it's subject to the review process or not. So that's the process that we're proposing in place of the existing building permit clearance process, and it's really just to make sure that we have an opportunity to make sure that changes to buildings are consistent with the standards and guidelines in our ordinance. The Historic Landmarks Committee bylaws are proposed to be relocated to the city code, similar to what we did with the Landscape Review Committee recently, and that's for your consideration tonight under the next ordinance on the agenda. The Downtown Design Standards and Guidelines, the main change that we're proposing to this one is similar to that certificate of approval process that I mentioned. We have a lot of standards that apply to things that just don't require a building permit, and right now the review is triggered by a building permit, so again, changing it to require that the provisions of the ordinance and the review process applies to any exterior building or site alteration. And again, because there is some subjectivity in that, we included the language that allows the planning director to determine whether something meets that requirement or not. We're proposing to allow the planning director to review minor alterations, and major alterations would go before the Historic Landmarks Committee for review. That's consistent with our current practice now, where the planning director has the ability to approve something if they believe it meets all the standards, and it only goes to HLC if it doesn't or if it's new construction. So it's similar with our existing practice, and we want to keep that ability for the planning director in place to help speed things along for some applications that are a little more minor and meet all the standards. And we've also updated our notice and review timelines to be more consistent with our standardized notice processes, consistent with the Chapter 17.72. We'd follow the standard notification and public hearing processes. The Applications and Review Process, Chapter 17.72, is being amended basically just to reflect all those changes that I've talked through and the changes that we made to the other two chapters. And then since the Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission identified one inconsistency in the owner consent process section, which has been updated to be consistent with the OARs. We also removed a repetitive statement in the definition of historic resources inventory, and staff realized after the Planning Commission that the historic preservation definitions, which were originally in that existing ordinance, when we drafted the new chapter, we included it in there, but all the other definitions in the zoning ordinance are in one single chapter, so we propose to move those to that chapter. Nothing's changed from the HLC and Planning Commission review, but they'd be relocated there, and all this information is included in your packet and in the ordinance in your packet this evening. A couple of other changes since the meeting that we'd like to propose to council to consider tonight are just a couple of clerical updates. One is in Section 1765030. We'd like to add this statement that's in bold and underlined on the screen. Basically, we define historic resources inventory as something completed in 1983 and '84, but we want to just include this statement and as subsequently updated to reflect changes that have occurred since then. And in the certificate of approval process, it's somewhat minor, but we've added a comma after the word historic landmark near in the third line from the bottom, just to be clear that it applies to both historic landmarks and a resource on the national register. So we're proposing those two changes. Those would be allowed to be amended by council if you're agreeable with those. One other change since the Planning Commission was we received some public testimony after the public hearing, but the comments we received were reviewed by planning staff, and we're recommending one additional change based on the testimony we received. There was a comment about the current standards and what we require for documentation being somewhat outdated, and we agree with that, so we're proposing to add the statement here, and this would apply when documentation is required for changes being made to a historic building or if it's being demolished. So add a statement to allow the Historic Landmarks Committee to require documents in another format, more suitable for the resource and the technology available at the time. It's somewhat broad, but we didn't want to specify in more detail specific technologies when it's changing so frequently, so it gives the Historic Landmarks Committee the ability to ask for a different documentation. So that's the last change that we're proposing. Other than that, staff's recommending approval of the zoning text amendments before you in your packet with those three amendments that I just walked through now, and I'd welcome any questions you might have.
Any questions for Chuck? Alan?
First of all, Chuck, thank you for that introduction on a lot of our minds about what historic landmarks are. Have you noticed an uptick in interest in historic landmarks by the public or owners or government in McMinnville?
I think there's a lot of interest in it. I think people that do own them are very proud to own them in most cases, so most of the time when we talk to people, they really take pride in that, and a lot of people that come in and ask if they need approval to do things to their structure or that kind of thing, a lot of times it seems like people really care and are trying to do things to preserve the historic character of the building, so... Yeah.
Thank you.
So when the... It's not triggered by building permits, how do the homeowners know that they need to come and they're... Because I understand that they're on historic landmarks, and they're notified that there's certain parameters, limitations on what they can do, so they know that they need to come to the planning department. Is that how it's triggered? To get the certificate?
Yeah, that's basically how it would be triggered. You know, right now, like I said, a lot of people come into the office and just call and ask us questions. Can I do this? You know, so we catch a lot of those upfront, and we let them know, obviously. Right now, if someone finds out they don't need a building permit for something, it's the last time we hear from them, so just having that in place. There was a conversation potentially about doing a notification of some kind to people that have historic landmarks, making them aware of the new process, and that was an idea that the Historic Landmarks Committee thought of. So we'll obviously... We'll put the information on our website. We'll have things in our office. Hopefully, word of mouth eventually will spread that this is the process for that, and we will catch a lot of them, I think, just from talking with people that call and stop in.
And Counselor, if I can weigh in on that, in your next ordinance, you're going to see that we've increased the responsibilities and duties for the Landmarks Committee, and one of them is education. So education's a big part of a historic preservation program. Perhaps it hasn't been done as much here recently as in other communities, and as we get outward through different types of communication tools about the value of historic preservation, the stories of the history of the community and the buildings that reflect those, that we will get more people interested in historic preservation. We also get more interest coming into the department so we can start communicating with property owners who have the resources and how to protect them. So that will be a next step for us. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Adam?
Is there a cost associated with this for the owner? Like, are they going to be incurring a bunch of certification costs to make sure that they're playing by the rules or...
So currently, there's no fee for the permit clearance application and the certificate of approval. We had planned on just continuing that, so as of right now, there would be no fee for that application unless we make a change to the fee schedule at some point in the future. But right now, that process, the Downtown Design Standards Review and the Historic Landmark Alteration Review currently don't have application fees, so it's a timing thing to allow for review, but there is no added cost to the applicant.
Thank you.
Any other discussions?
Not discussion, just a small request, which would be if this were to go through and chapter is changed, that the printed copies of the new chapter just be easily available for those of us that keep printed copies of our zoning ordinances in our offices. printed copies of our zoning ordinances in our offices.
For those that were in the commission and love that.
Yeah, in the commission and councils, and it's, I think, a pretty frequently referenced document for us.
Sure. Thank you, Remy. Chuck and Heather, thank you for your leadership from a staffing perspective. I I know this is something that we've talked about for a while, but to engage your committee in a more meaningful way, I take that back to them, that we appreciate the the work and the that they do this and their passion for this, I'm sure is is fairly high, like others on other committees. But it's one of the committees I will make. I will be there. I'm sure I'll enjoy that as much as the landscaping once I go, but I have to go once to get connected. But thank them for their work.
Yeah, I will.
So very much. Okay, hearing no other discussion with council, I'll ask for a motion to pass ordinance number fifty thirty-four to a second reading and ask for a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
It has been the motion by councillor Stassens and seconded by councillor Drabkin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any any opposed signify by saying nay. This motion passes unanimously. Ordinance number fifty thirty-four passes on its first reading unanimously. We will now ask the city attorney to read the ordinance once again by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number five zero three four, an ordinance amending the McMinnville zoning ordinance specific to Chapter seventeen point oh six definitions, Chapter seventeen point five nine Downtown Design Standards and Guidelines, Chapter seventeen point six five Historic Preservation, and Chapter seventeen point seven two Applications and Review Processes for the Preservation of Historic Resources in McMinnville.
I will ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number fifty thirty-four.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
It's been adopted, it's been moved by councillor Drabkin and seconded by councillor Rudin. I'll ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Councillor Drabkin?
Aye.
Councillor Garvin?
Aye.
Councillor Rudin?
Aye.
Councillor Stassens?
Aye.
Councillor President Minkie?
Aye.
Ordinance number fifty thirty-four has been adopted by a vote of the council with unanimous vote. That takes us to ordinance fifty thirty-five and with a first reading with possible second reading of amending the McMinnville City Code, Chapters two point three four, specific to the Historic Landmark Committee. We will now consider the matter of ordinance fifty thirty-five. Does any councillor object to having the ordinance read by total title only? Hearing none. David, would you read the first reading of the ordinance fifty thirty-five by title only?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance number five zero three five, an ordinance amending the McMinnville City Code, Chapter two point three four, specific to the Historic Landmarks Committee.
And we'll call on Heather to, I think, lead this discussion.
Yes, Mayor and councillor. So this is an amendment to the McMinnville City Code, adding sections to it to enable the Historic Landmarks Committee. You just heard from Chuck that we are removing it from the zoning ordinance and putting it into the city code. All the language that was in the zoning ordinance is transferring over. That ordinance was written in nineteen eighty-seven. So we felt there was the opportunity to evaluate it and update it as well. And we did the same process with this as we did with the zoning ordinance, which is we worked with the state and what they just passed us their Oregon Administrative Rules and brought some of that into this process. What's new to the ordinance, what's new to the code that wasn't in the previous ordinance would be the responsibilities and power. So it takes all the duties of the Historic Landmarks Committee, which is more than just land use. It really is a program. So it's it's proactive inventory evaluation designation of historic landmarks. So continual process in that regard. It is education, and that it is land use in terms of reviewing landmarks that are going through alterations or demolition. So the responsibilities section of this then charges the the Landmarks Committee to go forth and do that that work. So be able to move forward with the active proactive work. There's also funding for that. The city of McMinnville is considered a certified local government. Funding comes from the federal government into the states and then is distributed to certified local governments to do this type of work. There's a grant process every two years for that. If you apply for it, you're you have the opportunity to participate in the grant funding based on who else is applying throughout the state. So there's opportunities to bring funds into the city to help with that process and with those educational pieces as well. So by getting the Landmarks Committee into a more proactive stance, we will really be able to build this program a little bit more effectively. The city code also provides is also written in such a way where it's creating that standardization that we're looking for in terms of our committee enabling ordinances. We've added the language for the youth ex officio for this Landmarks Committee as well. We're currently working with the school district on how to bring those youth applications online so that we can bring that to you this fall. We also added a annual report to city council so that there's the opportunity for you to have dialogue with this committee about the work that they've done and the work that they're proposing to do over the next year so that that annual meeting can take place between the two of you. So this is new language for the city code, Chapter two, but it's bringing over existing language that was in the zoning ordinance and building upon it a little bit.
Thank you, Heather. Discussion at the council level? Any questions or or discussion among council?
I just have a comment. Do you have a question?
I did.
Go ahead. You go first.
So the sign ordinance enforcement is upon us. And is the Historic Landmarks Committee going to be involved in that?
Yeah, so that that's actually part of the work that we just described. So that proactive program approach in terms of what constitutes a historic landmark in a community and continuing due the identification, evaluation, and designation. We had a discussion with the Historic Landmarks Committee at their last meeting that it's been brought to our attention that some of the signs that received, some of the property owners who receive signs of letters of noncompliance for their signs, those are signs that could potentially be historic landmarks. They've been here for decades. They're constructed in a certain way that's not, construction doesn't occur anymore. And if they were removed, it may be something that that the community doesn't want to see removed. So we're going to work with the Landmarks Committee on that process of looking at the signs, developing criteria for them, and making recommendations on whether they should be landmarks or not.
Thank you. And one more, just just from my own knowledge. Is the committee going to give the final say on who is going to have to be changing their signs or taking them down? The letters that we've sent out to all the business owners who have noncompliant signs, according to our sign ordinance. They're coming in with requests. Is that going to the committee for review, or how is that going to work?
So two different tracks of thought. For those signs that could potentially be considered historic landmarks, those will be reviewed by the Historic Landmarks Committee under that hat of whether they're a historic landmark. If they are designated and identified as a historic landmark, they will then be exempted from that amortization process based on basically just the criteria that there that there is value to the community because of either their design, their historic integrity, their, you know, age, that the same criteria we use for designing any landmark. The other track of all the other signs and the and the letters that went out for that, that is us enforcing the code. So outside of coming to you as city council last fall to say, is this a process we still want to move forward with? And if so, here's how we'll line it up. It's not the individual case by case items are not going to go forward to a committee at this point in time.
So those requests?
We're in enforcement right now.
Directly to the planning department?
Yes.
And then to the city council?
Yeah, and then as, you know, as appropriate, it's it will be reviewed by other aspects of the city as an organization as well, most likely the attorney's office if it gets into that discussion.
Thank you.
There are some hardship in in other processes within the sign ordinance that allow for folks to come in and apply either either to to claim that they're not out of compliance or to to claim that they fit within one of the limited avenues for getting exempted from the sign ordinance. And those would be reviewed through their normal processes.
Yeah, yeah. So we we have opportunities for, right now, they got your sign could be potentially noncompliant. Prove to us it is compliant. We're great with that, the burden of proof. Or there's these other tracks that we could be exploring, and we're exploring those tracks as appropriate with each property owner that we're talking to.
But this is a continuation of this specific train of thought. On the notification letters that went out, were those exemptions or potential exemptions listed in that letter so that the those own property owners would be aware that they could come and pursue at the planning department? Keeping their signs if if they were to meet criteria for?
Yeah, so the code language went out in the letters for exemptions. That's it's bureaucratic language, right? So my, I would encourage anybody who has any concern or question to call us so that we can talk with them because walking through that process of exemptions is really a case by case basis, and we're happy to do that.
And I might suggest, I know that we're all getting inquiries from citizens about signs. If you'd like to, we could have Heather come back at a further council meeting and update us as to where we're at and the kind of request that she's getting, if that would help us in dealing with the approaches that you're getting from citizens in your ward. Would that be helpful?
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, I mean, it's a time sensitive issue. I think for me personally, the people that have approached me, I think I'll just make a point to reach out to them individually at this point and.
And and know that, again, any anyone that received, and I think it was a hundred and sixty-four?
We we sent out a hundred and thirty-nine, and I'd be happy to do a sort of summary during the department head comments of where we're at with that program.
Okay. Good. Any other discussion?
Actually, some of us might have more in their ward than others, so I have not heard any complaints, but that doesn't mean there might not be some.
Any other discussion on this ordinance?
I had a I had a question about the grants. Are the grants, well, first of all, have we ever gotten grants for from the federal government or from, is it federal or state grants?
It initiates at the federal government that's distributed to the states, the states distribute it to the local municipalities that are participating. And yes, the city of McMinnville has received sort of, we call them CLG funds, Certified Local Government Funds. In fact, CLG funds were used for the stroll booklet that was put together for the downtown couple of years ago. And then right now, we we did receive a grant for this for this fiscal year that we're in today. And and we're just, we're working on the RFP to go out for that here in the next couple of weeks. And we'll be working on a couple of different items associated with those grant funds. We'll put together a historic preservation plan for the city of McMinnville, so an implement implementable action plan. We'll also be doing some survey work, so that's part of the charge of a Historic Landmarks Committee. That survey work will be looking at some of the residential neighborhoods that are around the downtown that have a lot of great historic stock and looking to see if there's an opportunity to either do more landmark designation and even potentially a historic district.
Awesome. Well, and that's my other comment is that I love I love how proactive it is and how much energy it infuses into that because it has been kind of a sleepy, you know, committee or that some people know about, but not everybody necessarily. So I love that it's really proactive and there's a lot of education involved.
Yeah, it's a great committee. They're they're meeting. They're very diligent, thoughtful. It'll be a lot of fun moving forward.
Great. Any other comments? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to pass ordinance number fifty thirty-five to a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by councillor Rudin and seconded by councillor Garvin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any any opposed signify by saying nay. Ordinance number fifty thirty-five passes on its first reading unanimously. We now ask the city attorney to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number five zero three five, an ordinance amending the McMinnville City Code, Chapter two point three four, specific to the Historic Landmarks Committee.
I ask for a motion to adopt ordinance fifty thirty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by councillor Rudin and seconded by councillor Stassens. Ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Councillor Drabkin?
Aye.
Councillor Garvin?
Aye.
Councillor Rudin?
Aye.
Councillor Stassens?
Aye.
Councillor President Minkie?
Aye.
Ordinance number fifty thirty-five is adopted by a vote of five to five. Oh, five to zero. Yeah, you know my math. New business. We have a to consider a request from Ozzy Bledine for a noise ordinance waiver for the Walnut City Music Festival to be held on September first and second at seven five five Northeast Alpine Avenue, known as Granery. And Ozzy's here. Ozzy, if you'd like to come up and just share a little bit. Jeff, did you want to do an introduction?
Members of the council, while Mr. Bledine is making his way up, I can do a brief introduction. You all know Ozzy. He's a co-organizer of the Walnut City Music Festival, getting ready for their fifth year of operation. They'll be in the Granery District Amphitheater this year at seven fifty-five Northeast Alpine. Are asking for a waiver of our noise ordinance to allow for live performances on Friday and Saturday, September first and second up to eleven P M. There is no fiscal impact on our recommendation. Is that the council vote in favor of this waiver? Mr. Bledine may have some additional comments, and you may have questions for him as well.
Thank you. Ozzy?
Yeah, it's a very brief synopsis and then pretty much what there is. We're in our fifth year. We're looking to have music up till eleven, which I believe is an hour after the noise ordinance is set. We've gone up to ten in the past, and the reason to to go another hour is to have a second musician, a second set when it's dark out. And it might seem like a small thing, but when you're putting on a music festival, to have an additional night act really does help when it comes to setting and and the mood and just putting on an overall good experience for the festival goers. Like I says, our our fifth year, we're growing little bit by little bit. We're really hoping this can be become a destination event, which is why we moved it to the Labor Day weekend. We think we can draw from outside of our area over time and hopefully bring in some larger acts. And so that's about it.
Thank you, Ozzy. I know at the dinner meeting, we had a couple of questions. So if anyone has any questions of Ozzy, now would be the time to to ask.
Have you communicated with the residents in the area about a potential later hour?
We haven't. This year, we've done that in the past. You know, kind of walked around within a couple block radius. I've actually used that as kind of a marketing tool as well. And so if the council sees fit, we'd be more than happy to do that. It, you know, if you've been to the Graner Station, you know, the stage kind of points out towards the railroad tracks. And so, you know, the more affected would probably be out that way, but it creates a nice little buffer, so it it doesn't go too far. We have heard, you know, in the past, people said, oh, yeah, I heard there's music going on. And we've in four years, we've never had any complaints. People had said they've sat on their on their front porch and listened to music. But obviously, if it's a little bit later, we would want to get out in front of that. And so would be more than happy to communicate with the neighbors. And, you know, if that is something the council would like, if you have any direction to how far out we should go or or how we should communicate if it's going door to door or so forth. Be more than happy to take those comments and suggestions.
I would just like it to be the same that we've asked for other noise variances. Like Walt Galas for one last year for a wedding. And so whatever that radius was, we just extend that.
Do we have a circumference that we typically look at? And I don't know if it's if it's within your bailiwick or how we've done that in times past.
Yeah, I haven't been involved in the noise permits. Historically, that's come out of the city attorney's office. And so, not to pass the buck, but I just passed the buck.
And I think the noise ordinance is is fairly new, or at least newly acknowledged from last year. I don't know if it was new or if it was just kind of brought up last year. As we were forming this last year, it was the first time that we came up against it. And and going forward, you know, with being right next to Alpine, I think there's a lot of potential growth for our festival going up. So I I definitely hope it'd be an ongoing dialogue going forward too, how it permits to the noise ordinance.
So David, any any thoughts? You heard the discussion at the dinner meeting to give us an idea.
I I I trust that we can work with Ozzy to come up with a reasonable radius around the with a reasonable radius around the location of the event as a condition as we're putting the final conditions into the permit.
Okay. I'm hearing then, Alan?
Just another question for Ozzy. Is it typically a Labor Day weekend that you have this music festival?
It was mid-August, it was the third weekend in August. This is the first time we've moved it to Labor Day weekend.
Okay.
Yeah, we plan on keeping it with Labor Day weekend going forward.
Yeah, are there going to be some good bands?
There are going to be some very good bands, as always. Not only ones you've heard of, unfortunately. As I've learned in the music industry, people always say, who are you getting? I say, if I could tell you the bands that you know, it would cost us $30,000, and we're not quite there yet. But, so it's, we are bringing bands from around the country, though. We're bringing a band from LA, a band from Chicago, a band from Austin, and so it's kind of a slow steps in the indie festival industry.
Good jazz bands?
Not quite yet, but you know what? There's always room for improvement.
Ozzy, have you always had it at the Granary District or has it moved?
Yeah, we have, and Kelly at the Granary District has been instrumental in getting this festival off the ground. I kind of went to him a few years ago and had the idea, and he said, yeah, let's go. And then they have the stage there, of course, now, and there's a new owner, and the new owner at the grain station is willing to work with us still. And so we, you know, we're not sure about the future, but we really like having it right there in that little central area.
And how has it grown in the four years that you've had it?
Very slowly, very slowly. We've had a couple weather issues over the years that says back. One year, we almost didn't do it, but we're finally on really solid ground. We have really good committee now of organizers. We're making good partnerships with the Half Marathon and with Lynnfield, which were kind of two big reasons why we moved to Labor Day weekend because we thought we could draw in a lot of participants from those two, from that event and from Lynnfield students being in campus. And, you know, looking forward, I think we had ideas of being a big stage, you're doing a festival, you want to do a big stage, so going out to Joe Dancer or something and trying to grow big. But right now, we're just trying to get this year done, but I think, you know, that is one idea. Another opportunity really is to grow it kind of as Alpine develops in some form. I think there's a lot of opportunity there, so which route we go, we'll kind of see in the future, but I definitely see the opportunity there for that.
Okay. If I summarize, you would like to see contacting the homes around the Granary District, is that correct?
Yeah, I would recommend that the council directs the city manager and city attorney to write a letter to Mr. Bledine, letting him know that he has the council's approval conditional upon informing residents in the area within a distance which the city manager and city attorney deem fit.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Drabkin and seconded by Councilor Garvin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. And so we have granted the waiver with provisions to contact the neighborhood, and you'll get a letter, Ozzy, that would indicate how far we'd have to go out.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David, we've got a new employee.
Oh, we do, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce the newest member of my team. I can't say if she's the newest member of the city. I don't know if anybody started today, but Natalie started yesterday in our office as Deputy City Attorney. She'll be taking over city prosecutor functions, a function that has previously been contracted out, as well as taking on a very active role in helping to step up and enhance our code enforcement program across all departments that have some role with that, whether it's building, fire, planning department, or police department with general nuisance ordinances, as well as being, I think, a great resource to advise the police department and the officers in the performance of their duties. So I'd like to give Natalie, I told you she'd have about 60 to 90 seconds to give us the elevator speech on who is Natalie Levine, so I'll let her take it away.
Well, I didn't come prepared with who is Natalie Levine, but hi, I'm Natalie Levine, and I'm excited to be here. This is my second day. I come to the city of McMinnville with a background in criminal law. I was a deputy district attorney in Marion County for, well, I was there for almost a decade, all being said and done. From there, I spent a couple of years at a nonprofit law center called the Victim Rights Law Center, working with sexual assault victims who were experiencing homelessness, civil legal representation of those folks, and also doing some contract attorney work with the Oregon Sexual Assault Task Force. So I am excited to move into this new capacity and this new role and continue to dabble with the criminal law as well as work closely with police and fire and do the code enforcement stuff. I'm a mom of two kids, that's who Natalie Levine is too. I guess I should not say that. But anyway, thanks for, thanks for having me. Everybody's been very welcoming so far.
Well, thank you, Natalie. We're excited to have you on board, and we're very confident that you're going to enjoy those that you work with and the type of atmosphere that you're going to find within the city of McMinnville. We enjoy a reputation of doing things the right way and just having a friendly, good approach with employees and those visiting the city, so welcome.
Thank you.
We now have an opportunity to hear reports from councilors on committee and board assignments, and so I think, Alan, I'll start with you. We can start down that way and head this way.
I don't, I don't think I have anything to report on the committees I'm on.
Okay. Remy?
August 14th will be the Housing for Homeless Committee meeting at 4:00 p.m. right here in the conference room.
Thank you. Wendy?
Our Urban Renewal Advisory Committee was canceled this month, so our next one will be the first Wednesday in September.
I had an opportunity to attend my first Oregon Mayor's Association Conference held in Lebanon last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and met a number of mayors. Probably the largest would have been from the city of Beaverton, going down to communities under 100 representatives in their communities, but had a great time of networking and learning and being able to connect with mayors throughout the state of Oregon. So I'll utilize some of my learnings and some of the notes I've taken and bring that back to you at times that seem appropriate, so. Kelly?
I had a wonderful opportunity to go over to Salem with Heather and a member of the Planning Commission and listen to a couple hour speech on how property taxes are assessed and how you can maybe look at assessing them a little bit differently or the thought process behind it, particularly in relation to working with other governments like the county and, you know, the city having a certain amount of resources and how to allocate those afterward. Thought it was a fascinating presentation. Appreciate it, Heather, bringing that up. We've got a DMO meeting coming up on the 16th. I think there's another Wayfinding Meeting coming up also within the next week, so that seems to be the highlight of my activities.
Thank you, Kelly. Adam?
WICOM was canceled last month. It's possibly going to be canceled Thursday due to our director and ops manager both being at a CIS conference for important training. The CAD project, we were hoping to have numbers, final numbers to possibly sign on this month, but with all the planning going on for the Eclipse event coming up, things are moving a little slower, so hopefully our September meeting will have those numbers. But that software program is moving forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot something, I'm sorry. I also just wanted to let the council citizens know that at the upcoming Planning Commission meeting, they're going to be reviewing the code revisions that have come through the Affordable Housing Task Force. And it's a, it's a pretty interesting, there's a lot coming up on that meeting, so it's an interest, there should be a very interesting meeting with the Planning Commission.
And that'll be this Thursday evening?
No, it's the 18th.
That is Thursday, August 17th, and it will be at 5:30 during our work session.
Okay. Thank you. Chief, we'll go with department reports?
Yeah, real quick, hopefully quick. After last, I just want to bring everybody up to speed, the council, and then also, more importantly, the public. After last testimony, the last city council meeting, we obviously recognize that specifically the Downtown Association wasn't feeling that the police presence was, I guess, adequate enough and/or the park rangers, so we're down there enough. Just update, we have assigned a specific officer to be down there for a number of hours each shift, and we do recognize that having an officer down there during those times that he's working can be a deterrent, and I don't want to steal Susan's thunder, but she did a good job of kind of diving into the park rangers and the hours that were being spent down there so that we did meet with them, and we've talked specifically about being down there more, and they've got hours that are scheduled more too. So we are hearing the, we're hearing businesses and the residences, but more importantly, and then also the parks. We've directed a couple parks to be zoned in, I guess, for some behavioral issues, so we hear it, and we're making the adjustments necessary. I didn't know if you want to add anything?
No, thank you, Chief.
Well, Chief, I just wanted to let you know, I've had a number of comments of with our officer downtown and parking the patrol car on Third Street or there close is another presence that people have noticed and said they've noticed just an uptick of even police car downtown and more involvement, so I share that with you, and that was unsolicited, just coming to me from a number of sources this last week. Susan, anything else from, okay? Thank you, and again, welcome, Susan. Natalie, again, it's good to have you here. Let's see, Heather?
Yeah, so just a quick summary on the sign amortization program, and the News Register ran a good story on last Friday, but we sent out 139 letters, and the letters were really to let property owners know, we believe your sign may be in noncompliance, and we'd like to start having a dialogue and see if it actually is and how to make it compliant. From that, we've received responses, we're talking to probably about an estimate of about 40 people so far. They've come in frustrated, some have been angry. Most of the time when they're frustrated, we can start talking to them and start talking about process and the different paths that we can potentially take. We're able to get into a next steps dialogue where there's about five who are very angry, and we're working through those issues as well. What we're seeing is the impacted signs are the billboards, they're the larger shopping complex signs. We also have some small business owners who are impacted by it as well, so it runs the gamut. We're also finding that some of the people who received sign, letters of noncompliance got them for a variety of different reasons. We talked a little bit about the historic signs, and we're creating that program. Another program that we're looking at is several people got signed letters based on the fact that the cabinet of the signs, not the footing, but the cabinet reaches out into the public right of way. So it's, it meets the code in terms of size, it meets the code in terms of height, but it does encroach on the public right of way. We're working through a permit process for that. If it meets our clearance standards and our clear vision triangle standards, we feel that it's not an unsafe situation, so we want to create a permit for them so they can keep the sign as is and move forward in that regard. So we're trying to look at all the different tools available to us to work with property owners based on the intent of the code. But there are, there are signs that will need to be replaced, and they are pretty significant financial costs to replace them, and that's what we're working with at this point in time.
Any questions of Heather?
Thank you.
I do encourage you, though, if you're hearing from people, the best first step is really to call the planning department because there might be ways for us to get them into a path of compliance that's a fairly easy step. There's also, we just want to start the dialogue so that we can get in front of it earlier rather than later. We also hosted a meeting with sign companies so that they understood what we were trying to achieve and try to get them as a part of the team so they can be part of the dialogue with the, with the different property owners as to how to get into compliance with our code, so we're doing everything we can. Chuck's actually the one who's fronting the program. He's the one, I hear him taking the phone calls, and he's doing a great job with it.
The new guy on the block, and he's been here for a while.
Right, right. But he's doing a great job with it and is really patiently talking people through it, so.
Totally had to refer one attorney, by the way.
Thank you for the update. Anything else, Heather?
No, we're working hard through the Planning Commission. I was sharing earlier as I walked into the dinner meeting that we have eight items we're working on for the next packet. That's a lot of work for them, but they're being very efficient. They do a work session prior to their business meeting and then their business meeting, so we're, you're seeing some of that come to you now as we're starting to bring land use proposals to you and code amendments and things like that. So we are working through it in terms of the long-range planning initiatives as well as the current planning initiatives, and hopefully we'll be able to maintain that pace and bring more to you.
Thank you. Mike?
I was going to note, I'm disappointed that the fire chief isn't here this evening. After years of having him interrupt us with noisy fire trucks as we try to meet, this was my chance to upstage him.
Yeah, and he did very well, Mike.
And I realize that although that construction noise is music to my ears because I'm an infrastructure geek, it's not necessarily music to everyone's ears. We're literally in every quadrant of town right now, deconstructing, reconstructing, constructing improvements, and we certainly appreciate the public's patience and tolerance of our work. We have a business impact, and we realize that. We appreciate the patience and tolerance of our businesses, but we're pretty busy, and we're getting things done, so.
Melissa? David? And Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, a part of your packet is also our building department report, and so for your looking at. And so that will conclude our city council this evening. I just want to let it be known that we are going to move into executive session under ORS 192662D to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry out labor negotiations, so we will adjourn at this time.